Okay, did you uh?
Please, yes.
Yeah, we'll try to get around this. See if there are hard to pass. She.
I mean, I think.
Now for.
Now on the next information.
Exactly. Just remember a little.
What do you got next?
It's a.
That is a particular.
Straight forward. Let me leave some questions unanswered.
No. The same call of disconnecting. Someone's trying to.
Good. Confirmly, as I was thinking that if you are committed to a certain course of action, it conflicts.
Yeah.
With what an applicant requests, you got to refuse yourself.
If you're committed to a certain course of action.
You can't. Figure out why. You can't commit to anything involves cutting trees. There's a proposal. Solar array, which would require some cutting trees. You've got to go to them. Yeah, so they should refuse yourself.
It makes no sense.
Is it different than the conflict of interest in your procedure? So that that seems.
A little bit more explicit.
It makes no sense.
There it is.
Why not?
You've got to be open minded. You're talking about acting on a planning commission goal in a public hearing. You have to be open minded. You have to be able to consider all possibilities. You can't come with a preconceived notion or it's appropriate.
I know.
What? Are you taught? Did you visit?
I mean, maybe. Just hook your.
Chairs are required to get.
Everybody.
Are you doing it through the Teams meeting?
Always the training.
I could also join the Teams meeting to share.
Okay, that'd be great. Yeah.
This phone does. I don't know. It's saying it's sad.
Don't you have some?
There it is.
Yeah.
Look at that. Oh, it comes through call times. Toby, my dear one.
No. So, John, uh, this is a technically a planning commission meeting, although you're not making any decisions. I don't know if you want to call it to order or how we should.
I think I should probably read the script.
Yeah.
So, uh, this is, uh, let's see, it's March twenty-third meeting, twenty-fourth, twenty-fourth. Meeting of the Hartford Planning Commission to learn about new commercial energy standards. And it is a hybrid meeting. So, we will come to order. Some are all of the public body is meeting remotely and some are meeting physically in a previously notice location where the public may intend to observe, listen, and participate as previously. One member of this public body, other staff is present at the location to ensure the public can participate if desired. Please note that while we will strive to provide means for those attending remotely to participate in the public comment, there may be technical difficulties or reasons that otherwise prevent or interrupt remote public participation. Therefore, it's important to note that the open meeting law only ensures the public's right to participate and comment at a public meeting by attending at the designated physical location as posted in the notice and agenda. A member of the public or the public body has technical difficulties accessing this meeting remotely, please alert us by email to joannells@jelshartford-pt.org. In the event of a technical difficulty that cannot be resolved, we may continue the meeting if necessary to a time and place certain. Please note that all votes taken during this meeting that are not unanimous will be done by roll call, call vote, roll call vote in accordance with the law. As required by the open meeting law, let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance of all members participating in the member in the meeting and those members attending remotely identify themselves to ensure that they can hear and be heard throughout the meeting. Toby Damon.
Here.
Bruce Riddle.
Here.
Colin Butler.
Here.
John Heath.
Here.
Dylan Bianchi. Dylan Price. Okay, so that's the roll call. The first thing on the agenda is public comments.
So, David, while we read the script with our typical email may I mean, see it, and the public notice has data, but I maybe just check your email in case Dylan Bianchi is having a hard time jumping on. We did expect him to join remotely.
I do not have an email from Dylan.
So.
Oh, you're here, so.
Get back on my computer.
All right. Okay, moving to the meat of it. Turn it over to you.
Yeah, sure. So, my name's Dana Clausen. I'm the environmental sustainability coordinator for the town of Hartford. I think we all know each other. Last year at the Better Buildings by Design conference, I saw Steve present on the updates to the twenty-twenty-four commercial building energy standard, and I thought some of that information would be relevant to you all for when you do your review process. So I've asked him to come speak to you all tonight to let you know about those, um, those changes and then answer any questions you might have. And so I'll turn it over now to Steve. I'm just going to share the presentation so that folks, if anybody at home or those who aren't watching the video, will be able to see this.
Sure.
Well, yes, I, I just, I'm, maybe I'm technically public, but I just wanted to introduce myself. I will be the liaison to this committee from the select board.
Oh, good.
My name is Brandon Smith. Good.
Yeah, great.
Thanks.
So. Somebody just beeped in on teams. There's a new name. Sharon, do you have it?
That's the, we need to slide in.
Okay. Well, good. There you go.
Okay, uh, thank you very much for having me.
Before you get started.
Yes.
Is this something that we're going to need to commit to memory or are we going to get some kind of a summary?
This is going to be a test at the end of this.
That's what I.
You should not have to commit this to memory. In the short term, there is a redline version of the twenty-twenty-four CVs on the Department of Public Services website. And by redline, I mean it has a bunch of strike throughs from the previous version and it's challenging to read through it. Eventually, they'll have a clean version online. Eventually, there will be a hard copy of the commercial building energy standards that we can all have so we can flip through it. Don't hold your breath for that, is my understanding, but hopefully maybe this summer or early fall we'll have building documents available.
Great. Thank you.
And, and the slideshow will be available to anyone that wants it. I can email it over as a PDF to you later. My name's Steve O'Malley. I'm a lead engineering consultant with Efficiency Vermont. So again, thanks for having me here. Opportunity to speak with you about the commercial building energy standards. There's a lot to the book, so we're going to just sort of high level, go through some of the bigger changes that we see compared to the previous version. I'd like this to be conversational, so just ask questions as we're going. No, let's not hang out and wait until the very end. There we go. A couple of things I need to say. The material contained in some of this presentation here is proprietary to Incorporated by the International Code Council Incorporated. We have asked them for permission to use the information from their book to be able to present to you in this presentation. Okay, things we're going to talk about tonight, EV, electric vehicle, parking requirements, rooftop, solar, variances we'll touch on. Please remind me at the end of this. Someone had that question. We'll probably get to that last. Some thermal shell, HVAC, domestic hot water systems and, and compliance. A great question that asks is, so why do we have these code updates? And it stems from this. The state of Vermont has a what's the acronym, GWSA, Global Warming Solutions Act. And so the state of Vermont has said, we want to, by the time we get out to, if you look way out here, at twenty-fifty, eighty percent reduction in global warming pollutants. An eighty percent reduction relative to nineteen-ninety levels. But if we back up, we're looking here at twenty-thirty, they're saying they want to see a forty percent reduction of nineteen-ninety levels by twenty-thirty. How many years away is twenty-thirty? Not that many. And so when we look at this, this graph here and we're looking at what's contributing to the global warming pollutants that we have in the atmosphere, the orange chunk there is thermal, which is our buildings. The only thing that's larger than that is what's the green section at the bottom, and that's transportation. So there's no one single thing that's going to be addressed in terms of a silver bullet, so we need to hit everything, but our buildings are one of those things that can help us by making the buildings more efficient, more electrified, et cetera, reduce those global warming pollutants. And so we have these code changes. So every, it's historically, it's been every three years, three to four years-ish, with the idea being of incremental changes to that code that are cost effective, but are also going to be reducing the energy consumption and therefore the amount of global warming pollutants that those buildings contribute. That's why we do these things. I should back up for a second and say Efficiency Vermont does not write the code. Efficiency Vermont does not enforce the code. I do this. I, I'm hesitant to call it my hobby, but that's what it's sort of become because the state needed somebody to be in a position to be able to answer the public's questions about code. And I do a lot with commercial new construction and multi, large amount of family new construction, and it just sort of made sense for me to kind of wear that hat. So, again, I'm not here. You can, if you've got negative things to say about the code, you know, it's great. We can, we can air all of that, but I don't have anything to do with, with the writing of it.
Can you just stop for a second and explain what Efficiency Vermont is?
Yeah. So the question is, what is Efficiency Vermont? It's a, it's a program that is, well, let me raise, raise hands. Who here thinks it's a state program? Okay, that's good. Who thinks it's funded by taxes? All right, there's some more good knowledge there. So Efficiency Vermont was a program that was created by the legislature. And it is funded by ratepayers. So everyone, all of us in this room, anyone who pays an electric bill in the state, if you look on your electric bill, you'll see something the EEC charged. And that's your charge that is funding Efficiency Vermont. So commercial, industrial, residential, everybody feeds into this. And the premise was the, the legislature, going back before Efficiency Vermont existed, every individual electric utility in the state had its own energy efficiency program. They had different budgets, they had different goals, they had different programs, different offerings. So if you were a contractor and you worked in three or four different distributed utility territories, it was confusing and it was not fair for people who could throw a stone at the GMP customer who's getting all these great offers, but because I'm in VEC, I'm getting nothing. So the state of Vermont decided, let's pull that piece from all the utilities that they were doing, and we're going to centralize it. We're going to make it one program. And then if so, Efficiency Vermont is, it's not a company, it's a program. So the company, I work for the Vermont Energy Investment Corporation, VEIC. Way back in the day, we bid on the contract, as did a number of other organizations, bid on the contract to run and operate Efficiency Vermont, and we won that contract. And through competitive bid processes over the years, we've continued to win and, and continue to administer that program.
Thanks.
Yeah, great question. I hope I answered it.
Yeah.
Okay. So code covers a few things, new buildings, portions of buildings and their systems, new systems and, and, and equipment in existing buildings. For instance, if you had a, I don't know. Do you have a business, sir?
Me? No.
Okay, all right.
Not anymore.
I'll make that up. You're a hotel owner, and you've decided, okay, I need to redo all my electrical wiring in here. Code would, the old energy code would say, okay, you're touching that whole system. You're going to have to bring the, the lighting up to, up to the new commercial energy standards. The other thing that I think is interesting to note is that code also requires a plan for operation and a maintenance of your lighting and your maintenance. Question?
All buildings, house, commercial? Or is this just commercial?
This is just commercial.
Okay.
Yep. So we're talking just the commercial energy standards. So like residential energy standards, all other conversation. I'll be back another time for that one. There are exempt buildings. Go ahead.
Just, uh, does large multifamily fall under the commercial code?
Sometimes. So, great question. Multifamily construction, if it is three stories or shorter, it falls under the residential energy standards. If it's four stories or taller, it falls under the commercial building energy standards. I'm going to get ahead of myself because as we're talking about it now, what's great is that this code cycle, the folks who wrote the code took input and decided to try to really make multifamily buildings, whether you're three stories or four stories, almost identical in both codes. Because it really shouldn't change how you're going to design your building, how you're going to provide ventilation for your building, what kind of insulation you're required to provide if you go from three stories to four stories. It's still the same building type. It's still residential. It's still being occupied by tenants. So they've done, they've done a nice job of, of trying to marry those. There are some exempt buildings. Low energy buildings, meaning it's like really, really, really low heat in there, meaning if you're, maybe you're only heating it to, say, fifty degrees, and you've got a really good shell on it. Unconditioned buildings, meaning we don't have it heating and cooling. Greenhouses, inflatable buildings, yurts, and equipment buildings are exempt from the commercial energy standards. From the thermal shell, excuse me, requirements, yes.
Is there an exemption for a change of use for an existing building, one business changes to a different use?
There is not. It's actually the opposite. It's if you change the use of the building, you have to bring it up to the commercial building energy standards. You know, unless you just really didn't touch anything in the space. But if you were going from, say, an automotive garage and turning it into multifamily housing, you'd have to bring everything up to, up to code.
What if you didn't need, I'm trying to think, you went into the building and while the other person had a office and you're retail, you don't need to do anything to operate? Do you still need to bring it up to standards if the space works for you?
I would say no, because I think the intent is more about if you're changing things, if you were to open up walls or if you were to change lighting, et cetera. A little bit on compliance here too, which was just going to sort of touch on this here is who enforces the code in the, in Vermont?
That was my question.
Again, I'm going to start with it's not Efficiency Vermont. We are not the code police. The short answer is there is no enforcement. And that's one of the problems with, with the code, is that there is no enforcement. So and I'll get to your building, you know, if you walked in and thought, you know what, I can, even though I'm changing this use from an office to retail, all the lighting seems fine to me, the mechanical system's feeling fine to me, I'm not going to do anything to my thermal shell. No one's going to come after you to say you should make changes to, to bring this up to what code requires.
We do, the planning commission does have a condition when they see applications that before I issue a certificate of occupancy, that they report the certificate in the land records. So we're trying to sort of enforce it.
Yeah, which is great, but you're doing the enforcement piece of requiring that CD certificate, but is anybody reviewing the certificate to see how does it stack up? That's.
That's the mistake.
And that no one is. So and I'm talking statewide. That supposedly is changing. I think it's Act forty-seven in the legislature. They they recognize one thing. So as you can imagine, I said every three or four years, our code is, is, is improving the efficiency of our buildings. So what do you think's happening as code is requiring more and more builders in their buildings? What do we think's happening with compliance? It's going the other direction. So compliance is kind of trending away from the direction we'd like. So the legislature is aware of that. They're also aware of trying to keep things competitively fair, meaning you've got some designers, builders that are genuinely trying to meet the intent of code. And you have others who are maybe not so up and up and are not necessarily worrying about trying to get code, so they can build a less expensive building if you're not hitting code. So the legislature is aware of that, and they have this Act forty-seven where they're looking at how to, how to actually get some teeth and some enforcement on code. One of the ideas that came up was to have it sit and reside with the fire and life safety department. Who here thinks fire and life safety wants that added on to their list of things to do? No, they're.
I, we've had a couple of things with dealing with building code by the fire guy and he, he has to catch up on it, otherwise he, we got, we got snared and bad advice from him because he didn't know.
Yeah. So they really don't want it. Needs to go somewhere, fire and life safety to say. They'll probably say, if we get money and we can hire people and train people, then we could take it on, but to just add it on to what they're already doing with their existing budget, existing staff, nonstarter. So if there hasn't been, that's as far as I know that they're talking about it, but it's coming.
And the fire marshal actually in Hartford thinks that he has the authority to actually deputize you to do the energy code stuff. So that's the plan.
Okay. It's a better plan than some places.
Well, that's the first I have.
Right, and yeah. All right, okay. So let's talk a little about some of the changes from the, the previous code cycle to this. We're going to talk thermal shell here for a little bit. Adjustments to all U-value requirements. This is, it's code language, it's, we think in terms of insulation, in terms of what? Our value. The U-value is just an inverse of that. I'm not going to explain why, but just know that they essentially increased the insulation requirements slightly. Here's this better alignment with the residential building energy standards for our multifamily buildings. This is again, this is a little golf clap that, you know, they're, they're making things better on some fronts like that. There's now a new section talking about the indication of a solar-ready zone. And I want people to focus on the word ready. There's nothing in the code saying you have to install solar panels. They're just saying you have to make your buildings ready to accept solar panels in the future.
Building or site or either?
We'll get into it.
Can we just mention that the, our, the U-value is the inverse of the R-value, and that the lower the U-value, the higher the R-value, correct?
Correct.
That throws people off sometimes.
Yeah, and so the code requirement is so for instance, the code requirement is what you're seeing over here in this blue column right here, that U, that U factor. That's what code requires. This is a table that I've sort of, sort of pulled out of the code book, and I've just added what it used to be in the twenty-twenty version. But another nice thing, a little golf clap for the code people is they said, well, here are some examples. You know, example assemblies meeting that U factor requirement. So things that change slightly, continuous roof insulation, if you had a flat roof and all your insulation was foam board up on top of it, it went from R forty to R forty-five. I think walls added a little maybe like an extra inch. Forty-four, yeah, it's a small amount. So all the walls have added a little bit of continuous insulation to the requirement. The way it stacks up is you pretty much have to use some type of continuous insulation now on a building for it to, for it to meet code. And that's, that's what I want you to walk away with, not worrying about what the numbers are, but like just carry that in your head, like, commercial building, it's going to have to have some continuous on it to be able, to be able to meet these standards.
What is continuous?
So continuous is, picture, let's just take this building right here. Exterior is brick. If we pulled that brick back, you'd get back to presumably a metal framed wall. I don't know what year this was built.
Old, old.
Old, old. So it's probably just brick. Let's not talk this. Let's talk your house. So if you rip the siding off of your house and then you took foam board and put it on the outside of your house, and by continuous, they mean it's covering up all of these structural numbers. So.
So not fiberglass between studs, but.
Correct.
Some foam board or.
Or, or something. There are different products as well, but something that's covering the front of all of that, so that it's covering all of the studs. So that you're having less heat transferred through the studs. And so they'll call it continuous because if you're standing from the outside of the building, that's what you'd see. You would just see that, that, that board insulation product on the outside.
Okay, so you suggest there's very modest changes from the current standard to the revised standard for.
Correct.
Roofs. And a change in use would trigger having to comply with the new standard.
A change of use does trigger complying with the standard.
So you're suggesting that somebody's going to have to remove the roof from their building, the outer membrane, stone, whatever is on the, say, a flat roof to put a very minor amount of additional insulation down in a continuous plane.
I'd say maybe.
And put all that back on top of it.
Depends on the change of use standard has two pieces to it. A, it's the change of use, and then also is if it was going to use more energy than in its previous state. So if, for instance, I'm sorry, your name was.
Joanne.
Joanne? So in Joanne's case, if we had a change of use, but the, the hours of operation are the same, the lighting's all the same, the mechanical equipment's the same.
So you can, you can avoid going to the new, meeting the new standard if you're, you can demonstrate that you're not using more energy in your new use.
Correct.
Okay.
That was the question you would get asked.
In terms of.
The change of use.
Yeah, it's a self-certifying code, so it would have to do with the, either the owner or if there are some engineers or architects involved in the project, someone would be, would be in theory, considering, does this fall under the change of use section in the code or not? Sir, you, I think you had a question you had to hand up.
Well, I was just going to say, what about historic buildings?
Oh, historic buildings are a whole other animal. So you can get waivers. You can't just assume I have a historic building, so I don't have to meet code. It's, you just have to file the paperwork with the Department of Public Services and in, you know, presumably historic preservation would be involved and be able to help with some of the paperwork, et cetera, to demonstrate historic significance of it, and then those buildings do not, are not required to meet code if it's truly a historic building. I think one of the biggest things I want to, whoops, how do I go back? Oh, there we go. One of the biggest things I want to point out that's a change that, again, the, the code people deserve a little golf clap here for is this unheated slab section, which I've got highlighted here. The previous code cycle required R-ten, which is two inches of foam board, under your, the, underneath the entire floor of your building, regardless of the size of it. And so if you can picture, if you have a really large building, you know, if I'm standing this far away from that wall over there, having foam board underneath my feet over here isn't really doing a heck of a lot in terms of saving energy. Because the exterior of the building is, is all the way over there. But it does add a lot of cost when you start adding, you know, think about the, the footprint of this building and adding foam board beneath the entire. You know, think about the the footprint of this building and adding foam board beneath the entire slab that we're on here. Um, so they backed away from that. And they have changed it so that now you only have to have four feet of insulation either coming down the frost wall. Or four feet of insulation extending horizontally under the slab at the perimeter. So a big cost saving for developers, builders, owners. Um, and really no energy difference between what was required from the previous code.
What is the definition of perimeter, how many feet in?
Um, so four feet in, so you could picture, yep, so you'd have to have all around the entire perimeter of the building. That you'd have to have four feet of foam board. There was mud? Yes.
Uh, now that is four feet, so I've I've heard of horizontal four feet insulation. But I've always heard about it in the context of it extending four feet out from the foundation in terms of frost wings.
Yep.
Uh, that's not what you're talking about, you're actually talking about four feet into to the building.
Correct, yep, everything that they're referring to in the in the code is within the perimeter of the building. So what he's talking about is putting, you could picture now go out in the yard, dig up the grass, dig down a foot or so and put out. The foam board on the outside of the building, and that does a very effective job as well. Because heat is moving out through the building and if you can, if you're essentially insulating it. You're insulating the dirt around the foundation, and so that's what's, it has the same effect from an insulation standpoint. Nothing that interesting there. Um, one thing, again, I'm gonna do it a handful of times here in this section, we'll golf clap for the people who wrote code. Um, they've now made it that you just have to have a minimum of, if you've got continuous roof insulation and everything's up on top of of the roof. All the insulation, there's nothing in raptors or anything like that. There were different requirements depending on the way the roof was constructed, now they're just saying, no matter what's going on up there, Adam, you have to have a minimum of R twelve. Everywhere, so if you at at an edge where you've got a gutter or where you have a central roof drain. You've gotta have a minimum of R twelve, but you still have to hit that average R forty five that we talked about earlier. Um, air barrier, so, yes.
On the roof, what what happens if somebody's just replacing their shingles?
If somebody's just replacing their shingles, you don't have to do anything.
Basically, me.
Yep, you don't have to do anything, so the only time. Only time code would get triggered with roof insulation is, now let's talk again, I'm talking about a commercial building that's got a flat roof. And let's say the roof hasn't been replaced in thirty years and it's a it's a rubber membrane roof. And they rip up the rubber membrane and they find that there was two inches of insulation up there and the insulation is really. Rotted out from either critters getting in there or moisture damage or whatever, they take up that insulation. If you tear off your roof down to the sheathing in that assembly, you then have to build it back up to code before you put a new membrane on it. And they call that a roof replacement versus a roof recover, now the same situation. If you had just taken the rubber membrane off and there was only two inches of insulation and you thought my insulation looks fine. You're allowed to just go ahead and recover that with with just a new membrane. It all comes down to this technicality of what of it being a replacement versus a roof recover. Don't don't worry about memorizing any of this. Um, air leakage, um, there's the requirement is it um become a little more stringent in terms of what the permissible air leakage is in a building. So buildings have to be blurred or tested and meet this standard. Air leakage is probably the most cost-effective thing people can do as builders, um, owners, designers, et cetera. In terms of reducing energy use in your buildings, I think code does a great job right now at the insulation levels. I would never recommend to someone do more than that. Because I think at it from a cost-effective standpoint, it's not. Meet code, you're doing great from an insulation standpoint, but drive your air leakage way down. And there are methods to do that, you can hire a building commissioning agent, you can use products like AeroBarrier. But getting really, really, really low air leakage helps reduce the size of the mechanical equipment, improves uh comfort, occupant, you know. Occupant comfort in the building, et cetera, overall energy use, um, your ventilation loads, so it's just. It makes all the sense in the world when you've got a clean slate, really seal up your leaks and then and then install proper ventilation. An exception is multi-family buildings have a tighter standard. Yeah.
Um, is there a reason they're do they're testing at seventy five Pascal instead of fifty?
Yeah.
Fifty's pretty standard for residential.
Fifty is very standard for residential homes. Um, they they changed this, the last code cycle to seventy five Pascal, it used to be fifty both in the commercial. And the residential, um, they're they're just following national standards because commercial buildings are much typically much larger. And so to get a more accurate reading on the air leakage, you would want to put it under a uh a greater depressurization. And this is just a function of let's do what everybody else does with commercial buildings. Something that's. A carryover from the previous one, but I'm gonna mention here as well because the standard has been uh increased is. If you have a multi-family building, you actually have to do blurred or testing on a certain percentage of the units that are in the building. They call it compartmentalization testing to just check for leakiness between units. Does a little bit for energy, does great things for indoor air quality because, uh, you know, if I'm smoking and cooking fish next to you, you probably don't want those odors wafting into your apartment. So if there's a good air seal between the apartments, that's that makes good neighbors.
And you said no more guarded tests.
And no more guarded tests, correct. Um, so if it's a small building, fewer than eight units, you test them all, other than that, it's twenty percent of all units in the building. Um, okay, solar ready zone, so this is what it says, getting to your question earlier, sir, about does it, is it on the site, is it on the building? As far as code is concerned, it's only addressing solar readiness on the roof. Not not doing anything ground now. Um, and so there's some uh guidelines here, the orientation, um. Low slope roofs, they're not gonna suggest you put it on a sixty percent, you know, sixty percent pitch or anything like that. The solar ready zone has to be called out in drawings and it has to be not less than forty percent of the roof area. But it could be in a single area or it could be in little sub areas on the roof. So the construction drawings need to indicate the solar ready zone, and so roof loads need to be specified. The drawings need to show the interconnection pathways for conduit, meaning. When some future year, solar panels go on the roof, where are you gonna run your wires to get there, so put the conduit in place from the roof. Down to the electric room. Um, and electrical energy, and there's another piece, show on the drawings, electrical energy storage system ready floor area. So they're saying designate some floor area space that in the future could be used for storage, for battery storage. Um, and that the main panel, so here, this is gonna add some costs, the main panel shall have reserved space to allow installation. Of dual pole, dual pole circuit breakers for future solar electric and for the future, so the future electrical energy system. So panels size are gonna have to be. Little larger, so it's gonna add some first cost, even though we're not doing anything today, the panel has to be put in place to be able to deal with this in the future. Um, so there are some exceptions, if there's already some onsite renewables. If the solar ready zone is shaded, most of the time, you know, again, that common sense, you're not gonna put P V panels up there if you, if the sun doesn't hit it. Um, and another one, if you have extensive rooftop equipment, skylights, vegetation, or other obstructions as certified by a licensed professional. A licensed professional could be architect, be engineer, um. It's probably a pretty loose definition of what a licensed professional is. Alright, um, building mechanical systems. Heat pumps, are people here relatively familiar with heat pumps?
Yeah.
Yeah, they get shoved down our throat and, you know, on our, on the ads and whatnot, we hear, I don't get me wrong, I love, but. Um, one great thing that they've added to the code here is that they're saying. Heat pump equipment shall not be sized greater than the calculated peak heating and cooling load, so they're saying. Somebody's gonna run a heat load calculation and size the heat pump, because what can happen is if contractors are just saying. Yeah, that looks like a twelve ton unit to me, and they just put it in, that equipment is not necessarily going to behave as efficiently as possible. It might have issues um that uh. Don't allow it to live its sort of rightful life, you know, if you could, if you should get twelve years out of a heat pump. Maybe you're only gonna get nine or ten because it's working really hard. Um, so there's a really, there are a lot of reasons why, and comfort is the occupant comfort is the other reason, like, why these things need to be sized correctly. And so they're actually calling it out in code, um, because I think they've seen enough installations that have. Um, been so optimal.
That's not for residential.
Pardon?
Not for residential.
I think residential already requires that, I think they do in the residential code now too, saying you've got to, somebody has to size these things.
Yeah, my two guys just.
Yeah. Somebody should be signed, but again, there's no code enforcement and.
And they wouldn't do it, I asked, I asked them, and they wouldn't do it.
So you, that previous slide said you cannot oversize. The heat pump.
Right, because you might think about, hey, if I oversize my boiler, great, I've got all this extra capacity, the boiler, an oil boiler doesn't really care so much. But these heat pumps, if they're if they're oversized, they'll throw in a bunch of heat into the space quickly. And then the thermostat's gonna say shut off. And it's gonna go in that sort of on, off, on, off, on, off, which is really hard on the compressors. And it really destroys the efficiency of it so that. Heat pumps like to have long runs, long runs, they just like to turn on and then just. You know, cook a simmer is the word I'd use for it, they just like to simmer for long periods of time and that's how they operate really efficiently.
And I can show people if they want to see it, uh, for boilers that were oversized in town, I know where they are, like, what happened, the ones that short-cycled.
Yeah, some boilers, right, it, like propane, and if you've got condensing boilers, stuff like that, yeah, oversizing those will destroy those.
Yeah, our D P W boilers, like collapsing on itself at twelve years old, it's, they had a rough life.
Right. Um, in general. Uh, that's not that in. Some very small increases to efficiencies for mechanical equipment, and that's just following what the internet, the I E C C. Which is the international code that Vermont bases our stuff off of. Um. Most equipment efficiencies remain the same, the big things that we see, chillers and boilers. B R F, heat pumps, all those, the efficiency requirements are still the same, there are no changes there. Um. Electric resistance heating equipment, can we heat commercial buildings with electric resistance heat?
And you are, should you is?
Uh, well, yeah, well, I should, I should rephrase it, you can, but I mean, by code, are you allowed to heat a commercial building with electric resistance heat? So the the answer is no, and we think of like, when I think of electric resistance heat, we're thinking about baseboard radiators we used to see in our homes. Back before we were told to get off of that and go to fossil fuels and then now we're going back to electric. Um. And and there's a reason why the commercial codes is can each of buildings with electric resistance heat is because it's really bad for the grid, so. It, and you might be saying, well, why are we then heating with heat pumps? And it's because heat pumps operate much more efficiently, you have to, you know, three to four times more efficient as electric resistance heat, so. The implications on our statewide grid is smaller. Um, but it is allowed under some circumstances, if you have cold climate heat pumps that are the primary heating system. And you are controlling that electric resistance heat so that it's only allowed to come on at temperatures below five degrees outdoors. And what that's getting at is if the heat pump can't keep up with the load in the building, you are allowed to have a little bit of electric resistance. To keep people comfortable, but only again if you have a cold climate heat pump as the primary source of heat. Uh, oh, and your building has to be really tight, that's the other thing. Um, but, and the thing I want you to walk away from this evening about air leakage and and air tightness is. It's really the most cost-effective, least expensive thing you can do in your building to greatly improve your energy efficiency. Um.
But then how do you maintain indoor? To prevent indoor air pollution?
Ventilation. So you why, you, no one, no one's gonna ever suggest build your building really tight and then and then hope for the best. It actually code requires the, the mechanical codes require mechanical ventilation in these buildings. So then you think, okay, we know we we're gonna be ventilated because we want fresh air in these spaces, then how are we gonna do it? So that you're not just throwing money out the window and it's to use energy recovery ventilation. Um, it's not required in a lot of cases in in the commercial energy code, but it's always a usually a great idea to use it because. You can capture fifty, sixty, seventy percent of the energy before it leaves the building. But we can chat more about that if people would like.
Is there any kind of requirement for the systems, ventilation system to be commissioned?
There is, there is a commissioning requirement for the mechanical systems. Um, and ventilation will be part of that, so code code does specifically say you have to commission your buildings. You can't just, you sell certified code, so again, you can, but code says you're not supposed to. And by code, you're supposed to hire a commissioning agent.
Can you explain what commissioning is?
Um, yeah, so we and we see this frequently where picture a a building. And a mechanical contractor has gone and hooked up a furnace and they've hooked up an energy recovery ventilation unit and they've run all the duct work. And they turned it on, said it works, we're out of here. Hmm, and a lot of cases, what we find is they haven't actually been configured to run properly. Meaning the setbacks are established in the in the in the software within the equipment. Um, the flow rates haven't been adjusted, nobody bothered to say, wow, we only need thirty cubic feet per minute in this room. But there's a hundred and fifty coming into because nobody came and balanced the dampers. And so we find the vast majority of commercial buildings that haven't had commissioning. Things are screwy because the contractor with this, I'm here just to install this. Um, not all, again, the the larger and and, and small, just more reputable. Mechanical contractors will do that as part of their business, but there are plenty who just walk in, install equipment and get out. And that's what the commissioning is trying to to overcome.
Commissioning has to be done by somebody other than the contractor that.
Yes, has to be done by a third party, can't be done by the contractor, it can't be done by the owner or an owner rep, it has to be a third party. And there are several organizations in the state of Vermont that do that, uh, that provide those services, efficiency program is not one of them.
Do all, does, does this commercial code apply to municipal facilities?
Yes.
Schools?
Yep. The only commercial building you're allowed to put straight up electric resistance heat is into a multi-family building. But under various specific circumstances, it has a very, very, very low heating load. So what they're getting at is if you do a really great job on your thermal shell, insulation, really, really low air leakage. And you can get your heating loads really low, they will let you put in electric resistance heat as your primary, which is a pretty attractive. Uh, concept to entertain because it's so inexpensive. Electric resistance heat is dirt cheap, you can buy a four-foot section of electric resistance heat for like fifty dollars. You know, compare that to all the copper and PEX work to install a central boiler to heat your multi-family building, so there's tremendous cost savings. Still gonna figure out what you wanna do on cooling, but if you wanted to do that, you have the option in a multi-family build. Um. Well, let's see. Parking garage ventilation, it used to just be you have to monitor for carbon monoxide, they're now requiring you have to monitor for uh the nitrous oxides as well. Um. There are efficiency requirements, so if you have a multi-family building, you are required by code to put in energy recovery ventilation. That's new for this code cycle, it used to be you could just put a bath van in and have their bath van just running at a very slow. Speed to be providing continuous ventilation, E R Vs are now required, and there are minimum efficiency requirements as well.
What's the word after sixty percent?
Uh, enthalpy recovery, it's just, um. The seventy percent recovery efficiency, think of that as heat, so when you are. In winter time, heat's going out, you're building through ventilation, cold air, fresh air is coming in. Seventy percent of the heat from that outgoing air is being transferred. Seventy percent of the heat from that outgoing air is being transferred. Entropy has to do with moisture. And that there's, there's some energy that gets transferred along with moisture as well. So you have some moisture transfer between the air screens as well. The, the, the energy recovery core where the air is passing each other. Um, is made out of a, a material that allows for moisture to, to transfer, but not, not the contaminants.
That way you don't get like dry skin and other issues you can get in.
Right, yeah, but even within the E R V, it's still, yeah, our air is bone dry in winter time. So it's still at times, multifamily buildings, you don't have to worry about so much, but in our residential homes.
Right.
So even with any E R V, you can still have dry skin and.
Please.
Yeah, maybe not as, just not as bad. Yeah. Um, duct insulation in, uh, increased, went from R eight to R twelve or R twelve to R twenty. Um, hot water systems, you are allowed to have electric resistance hot water tanks. But there's a maximum size of seven point five kilowatts. Um, what do we wanna talk about? Energy monitoring is required in buildings greater than twenty-five thousand square feet. Meaning there has to be some software package and some ability to monitor. Uh, a whole host of things that are going on in the building and we'll chat about that in a second. This is, these are just some highlights that we're gonna talk a little more about. Electric vehicle, excuse me, charging stations must be level two or better. Who knows what level two is? What are we at?
It's, uh, above the highest level, so it's takes longer, like, maybe. Hours longer than the most efficient.
Yeah, and then what's, what's level one?
All outlet.
A wall outlet. Code no longer allows you to say, we're gonna, you can plug in a, a, a level one charger and need code. It's gotta be level two or greater.
The numbers of chargers.
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna get to that.
Okay.
Um, there's also this new thing, electric readiness. So you're, you can still build a building with fossil fuel, hot water and fossil fuel heating. But you have to make provisions for the future electrification of that. And so there's a section about, um, making your building electric ready. And it, we will chat about that in a bit. Um, electric meters. This is talking about multifamily buildings. It used to be that all, every apartment needed to have its own electric meter. And that's still the case except for affordable multifamily buildings. With affordable multifamily buildings, they're allowed to master meter those. Um, in large part because their mission is, and they're required by law to provide affordable rent levels. They can't just red, they can't just raise rent levels if they need to or want to. So in an effort to keep rent levels down, um. They're allowed to not have all the meters and all the meter fees, um, associated with, with individuals, individual metering. And by master meter, I mean there's one meter for the whole building.
So, so if you are building an affordable. Housing. Multifamily house. You don't have to meter individual units.
Correct.
What if it's a, what if it's mixed between affordable and market rate?
You would probably, the code would probably say you would put in individual meters for the market rate minutes.
So, so you, if you build an affordable housing facility. And you want to change its use at some future point. You're gonna be faced with the challenge of separating all the wiring in the building to provide meter.
Yeah, except this, this last little bit here, the exception says future electrical metering must be considered and planned for in the electrical layout of the buildings. So in your case, let's make the case where you had it all affordable today.
Yep.
You would have to have the wiring in place. To be able to, if, if, if you decided, okay, I'm gonna make this market rate. You would, you're supposed to have the infrastructure in place where you could then in, just stop, install a meter for each apartment.
So not to be difficult, but if you've got to provide the wiring to do individual metering. Why wouldn't you do individual metering? What's, what's the cost advantage for constructing affordable, uh, housing? Um, if you still have to wire.
Meter fees. So as an affordable provider, you would either pass that on to your tenants. But you're trying to make it as affordable as possible for your tenants, so you would be paying that. So you have forty meter fees, which. Up, up monthly. So when you had a forty unit building and you have forty meters that you're paying for, that's, it adds up.
Right.
Um. Let's see, so this energy monitoring. The monitoring needs to be able to record and report energy consumption to building operation and management personnel. And as I remember, the things that you need to be monitored are pretty much everything, like lighting. Hot water load. Eating, just. A no, a number of points. I can't see my notes here, so that's why I can't. Um. And the exception is multifamily buildings. If every bill, if every, if every tenant has its own meter, you don't have to do energy monitoring. Let's go back, if you're an affordable provider and you're doing master metering and your building's greater than twenty-five thousand square feet, you need to do energy monitoring. Just, just so that it's difficult. Um, okay, level one, level two, level three, we chatted about that briefly. Level one's an outlet. Level three is a fast charger. And level two is somewhere in between. Level two is what typically people will install at their homes typically. Um. So a few definitions that are helpful for what we're gonna talk about here. E V S E is electric vehicle service equipment. So that's a spot that there's an actual charger. An E V ready space is a parking space where an outlet. Can picture, there's conduit, there's electrical run to the spot, but there's no actual charger installed. Then there's an E V capable space, which is you've just run conduit to that space. In the future, you could run wire out there. And why it's important to have these three distinctions is because of. Uh. Getting to your question, sir, about what are the numbers that are required? It's, it's based on whether you have equipment installed. Um, whether it's E V ready or whether it's E V capable. And it all comes down to your building occupancy type. So things like group R, one, I think is retail, group R two is multifamily. Um. Group M up at the top, municipal, and this tells you that, let's just focus on that top one, top line municipalities. Two percent of the parking spaces would have to have an actual charger there. And twenty percent of the other spaces would have to be E V capable, which means you just ran conduit. And you can see that for each group, it's a little different. And the one that's really different is multifamily buildings. There's this equation down here, and this equation is, is mimicking what's found in the residential building energy standards, just so that they're apples to apples. But you'll notice multifamily buildings don't have to install any chargers or make any of them root charger ready. They just have to have conduit installed, multifamily buildings. Um. There are some exceptions. If you have ten or fewer parking spaces, um, standalone retail stores. And then the last one, motor liquid fuel dispensing facilities. It's what you and I know as gas stations. Not sure why we can't call it a gas station in code, but we can't. But you don't have to install a, a motor liquid fuel dispensing facility.
Thank you.
Um. The only thing I wanna mention off of this slide is if you have a parking garage on your multifamily building, you don't have to install equipment because fire life safety says. We do not want chargers beneath multifamily buildings because we don't want E Vs catching on fire. Potentially underneath a multifamily building. Um, why don't we want the E Vs, electric vehicles to catch fire under our multifamily buildings? Not that we want any car to catch fire under a building, but why in particularly would we be worried about an electric vehicle?
Lithium.
Cuz of lithium. You know, if your car catches on fire, your gas car, maybe it burns at fifteen hundred degrees or so. If your electric vehicle catches on fire, it's burning like twenty-five hundred degrees Fahrenheit. And now things like structural steel start to be impacted. And, uh, so you could have a big problem if you had a, a big lithium ion fire going on in the thirty-three building. So again, fire life safety always trumps energy code, so even if the energy code said. And as it did in the previous code, there was no provision about parking garages. Um, not having them, but fire life safety, you always said, eh, no, you're not allowed, we're not allowing that to, to be installed. Um, there's that additional electric infrastructure thing I wanted to talk about quickly. And what this is, is. For instance, if you're installing a boiler in a commercial building, oil, propane, natural gas. They're saying you have to plan for future electrification. And what they're saying is you have to do things like install a condensate drain within three feet of the heating equip. That, again, that's, at some point, there would be some piece of equipment that's electrically operated, that's probably a heat pump. Generating condensate in the cooling, in the warming, in the cooling season. Um, so they're just saying you have to plan for a lot, future electrification of your building today. And that has to do with things like water heating, it has to do with commercial kitchens, has to do with appliances. Uh, anything like that in a commercial building, there has to be thought for future electrification. Um, running conduit, those types of things. Uh. Okay. There are, so there's the base code, which is prescriptive. We have tables. We say, okay, I'm gonna do this with my insulation. These are the kind of windows I'm gonna install, my equipment meets the efficiency. If they, okay, I'm done with code. What, you're not done with code, or, or I guess better said, code's not done with you. There, there are a couple of things in there called energy credit requirements. And another thing called renewable and load management credits. So this is where we get into the à la carte part of code. So there's that prescriptive section we just talked about. Again, looking at tables and just, hey, I just know, I know I need to have R forty-five on my roof. Now they're saying, based on your occupancy type, you have to get a certain number of points. And. So it's, so now code is asking you to do a little more than the prescriptive part of it. And what I, what I like about this is that. Rather than the code officials telling you specifically what you have to do in your building, they're letting, they're letting you have some choice. Do you wanna do a little more on your insulation? Do you wanna have slightly higher efficient boilers? Do you wanna have a, a more efficient hot water heater? Do you wanna have, you know, name it, there's, there's piles of them. So here's all the points you have to get by your building occupancy group. Uh, mixed occupancy, you just take a weighted average of, of the spaces and the points to get the points you would need. But there's all sorts of things that you can do to get points. Um, improving the, your envelope performance. Um, improving the efficiency of your cooling system, doing energy recovery, all sorts of things around domestic hot water. Um, things around lighting with enhanced lighting controls. Residential, more efficient residential kitchen equipment. So you've got a, a number of ways of, of achieving the points for code. But code's still not done with you. So this is the energy efficiency measures. The next one is, there's also this renewable and load management credit requirements. This is the one that's new for this code cycle. The other one existed in a different form, that the, the energy credit requirement. This one is, uh, new for twenty twenty-four. And, and what this is sort of getting at is. Um. Having the ability to. I'll say flex load. And, and what this is doing is it's helping the utilities. So as we are electrifying our state. We're putting more strain on our electric grid and substations, transformers, et cetera. And so rather than build, planning to build out a very expensive grid for the future. What, another way to do it is to think about, how can we be smart about how we're using our energy? And can we do things like, hey, we know it's a peak event coming up. Tomorrow's gonna be ninety-five and a hundred percent humidity. We know air, air conditioner is gonna be blazing. Can we get somebody, a commercial customer who have got signed onto a program to say, hey, can you pre-cool your building for a few hours before four o'clock today? And that way, then they can just turn off their air conditioning equipment at that period of time, float through the peak event. Um, the utility wins. We win as rate payers because we're not having to go out on the open market to buy really expensive energy at peak times. So this is the future of electrification in the state of Vermont. There's going to be this flexible load management type stuff. But it could involve batteries, it could involve, again, um, thermal batteries as well. Heat up a big pile of water earlier in the day and then use that to circulate in your, in your heating system, those types of things. So there's points that you got to get by, by building type.
Man, managed by the utility or managed by the building owner?
Um, this is a little bit of both. Some of these like automated shading, that's just a, um, you know, on your south facing wall. Controls, we just draw up your shades during those times. But some of these like, uh. H vac load management, I think the utility would wanna be part of that. I think they would wanna be involved with that. So that they could be talking about having an arrangement of, if we call a peak event, are you gonna be willing to do this? And the utilities will typically, probably, well, I shouldn't say typically, the plan is to have, uh, pricing. So that if you're participating with that, they're gonna thank you, hey, thank you for turning off your air conditioner at four today. We're gonna give you a reduced rate of, or some, some kind of a, uh, monetary reimbursement.
Yes, we did, we had that for town hall and basically twenty-four hours before an event, I'm gonna text an email from. Green Mountain Power saying, hey, tomorrow's gonna be peak event, we're gonna preheat your building. And then, um, we get a financial incentive for every kilowatt not used during that period.
Right.
Based upon their, um, calculations for what we would be using otherwise.
Yep, and previous to this year, it wasn't in code. It was just sort of something the utility would do on their own. Um, but now they're trying to start baking this in so that people are starting to forward to think about how they're gonna have electrified buildings. Um, so talk about that. Compliance is self-certification. So when, you know, when you get the C B's certificate coming across your desk. You're, you're trusting that whoever filled it out, filled it out honestly and correctly. Um, but there's no, there's no compliance in time to, to check these things. Um, and it's interesting, the public service department is authorized to create and update the C B's but not enforce it. And in the code, it talks about the code official, but there is no code official designated in the document. Um, there's a handful of different ways of demonstrating code compliance. This top one, it says, chapter four up there in the very left corner, that's what we were just talking about, sort of this prescriptive approach. But there are other modeling things that you can do, actually modeling based on energy costs, based on performance. And then this last one is an above code program. And where I see this happening is, uh, efficiency Vermont has a high-performance program for multifamily buildings. And if you were a developer of a multifamily building and you're participating with us. You could just cite, because the Department of Public Services said, yeah, we, we look at that as an above code program. You wouldn't have to do all of this other code stuff. You could just say, we're working with efficiency Vermont, a high-performance program, and you're done. That's your code compliance. Um. This prescriptive one, so it's not just as simple as building the building. Filling out the certificate and submitting it and walking away. Part of filling out the certificate is. You keep seeing comm check, comm check, comm check, comm check, comm check. It's a free online program, national program, Department of Energy runs it. Where you actually have to enter in all the information for your building. To demonstrate that it's actually meeting code. Cuz it'll have the things like the, for the Vermont one, it will have, here we go. Efficiency package. That's those, that's those energy credit things we were just talking about. So you have to be able to show through this software. How you're, how you're meeting code for all of those things.
But isn't this all gonna go away?
No. What, what part of it?
All of it.
Why would it go away?
Cuz, uh.
Because the person who runs it, the cabinet secretary is impliantly opposed to all this. And he's just, sixty percent of his budget, he wants to eliminate. I think he's nuts. And he wants to eliminate, uh, climate change hysteria. So I think it's a matter of hours.
Thankfully, the state of Vermont is, you know, this isn't a federal thing, this is all, this is what the state of Vermont wants to do for the state of Vermont. So unless the legislature changed how we're gonna approach compliance and code changes, um, I think, I think, I think we're good.
And so many of these things are, makes sense financially for whoever owns the building, it'd be silly not to do all that.
Well, yes and no. I mean, it will absolutely lead to a better building from an operating standpoint, from a building durability standpoint. But from a first cost standpoint, if you can shave some of these things that code is asking for, you would save some money first cost, which is why some people choose to willfully, uh, not meet code. Here's the C B certificate that needs to be filed, filled out and filed. Um, these are the things that, that, that form is, I'm not gonna go through it, some information of the form requests. Um, let's go through that. Yeah, here we go, notes on commissioning. So it has to be completed by a project commissioning authority. We were talking about building commissioning earlier, mechanical commissioning. The commissioning agent has to have experience as a commissioning authority. At least three previous projects, at least twenty thousand square feet or greater, and they have to be an independent third party entity. And as you were sort of pointing out, sir, you know, can't be an employee of the design team, construction team, owner or developer. Um, so who can sign off on that certificate? Primary designer, engineer, architect, yeah, quote, other licensed professional.
I'll get my nurse.
But, and then it also goes on, say, if none of the above are involved, then the builder. So the builder's also allowed to sign off on this certificate affidavit. Um, so there is a couple of affidavits. Um, there's the builder affidavit. Um, they're essentially saying, they're attesting that, yep, I built this to code. And this is where they have to sign off on that. And there's one for the builder and there's one for the designer. So up at the top, typically the architect, but it could be the owner, it could be the G C, um, saying that I have designed the building in accordance with C B's. Maybe I'm, someone's saying again, I attest that I built it. So that's meeting C B's.
I, I realize all of this is not brand new, but some of it is. Who are the contractors that are capable of executing a project that, that requires all of this? Do they, are there consultants out there that specialize in engineering firms, architects? If, if I had a chunk of land and I wanted to put off a commercial building, who would I be looking for to give me professional guidance on all of this?
Architect and engineer. They get it. And then when they get stumped, they call me.
And are, do they have specific certifications in being versed in this?
Yeah, they just have to, they just have to know it as part of their profession because they are, they're signing a certificate saying, I designed this building to meet the intent of the commercial building energy standards. And so they do, they know the code. And it's just, when we just get into their, the code is only this thick. And it needs to cover something, you know, about this much material. So there's always gray areas, uh, that have to be interpreted. Um, and as part of that, someone was asking a question about variances. Only person I can issue a variance to the code is the Department of Public Service and the guy's name's Barry Murphy. Um, he's a one man show. So when you write to him, don't be surprised if you don't hear from him. And you might have to write him a couple of times or call him a couple of times. Um, but that's the only way to legally get a variance for code.
So Steve, I saw recently in the R B's code that it says some verbiage about how you can be held viable as a builder for six years if you're supposed to build a code compliant home and you don't. Is there anything like that for the C B's?
I don't know, but I haven't looked for that language, so I don't know.
Yeah, I was kind of shocked. It was like right there in the front, in the, you know, within the first three or four pages.
Yeah, when, when we were talking about compliance earlier and that compliance is going down while code increases in, in stringency. Commercial code, it's, I'll lay back up, it's really on the residential side where we see the most of the problems. Um, because you could have a guy who's just building a house, one off. Um, maybe he's never even seen the code, doesn't even know the code exists.
People still build their own house.
Absolutely. And they'll build it like their dad did. You know, that absolutely happens. Commercial buildings typically have licensed professionals involved, an architect and engineer. So there's compliance on the commercial side while still not perfect, we still see plenty of issues. It's still a lot better than it is on the residential side. So that's probably why they specifically called it out on the residential one. Yeah, there's that construction affidavit, design affidavit, have to be notarized. And then when, so you, you've built your building, you've filled out these compliance documents, what do you do with them? What do we do with them? Yeah, so you do a few things. You've got, by code, you're supposed to permanently affix a copy of it to either the inside of the electrical service panel, heating or cooling equipment, or nearby in a visible location in the mechanical room. Adjectives shall accompany the certificate. So maybe they're in a Ziploc bag or something and you've put in there in the mechanical room. Um, they have to be provided to the public service department. So there's your second copy. And this is where you mail it to. And I don't have it on there, but then third is, yeah, you're supposed to file it with your local, I need to put, I need to update my slide here. Uh, you need to file your local town.
Is, does Manford have something like this?
I don't know. I don't know what New Hampshire does. So there's, I don't know, six hours condensed into an hour and fifteen. Thanks for your time.
Well, good job. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Do you have questions for Ask Dana?
Yeah. So what do you expect the planning commission to do when we see a commercial bill application?
Asking if they're gonna meet code. Actually, I don't know because I, I have not been involved in my local planning commission. So I really don't know what happens in that process. I'm sort of involved from like the design of a building on.
We, we see people say all sorts of things, um, and it's never very clear. We say, oh, we have some builders that say they, they meet high performance standards. But then other people say they meet, oh, you ask them exactly what they're doing. It's very vague when they say high performance, which should be quite the difference from general standards. So, um, yes, we, we get all sorts of comments, but just looking around at least the way the shells are being built, they're all pretty consistent with continuous insulation. You know, two by six walls, wood frame lines, um, air streams, who knows what they are, but they, 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 they say that they're doing all of that. Um, and all, most of the new buildings that have gone through here all are, oh, actually, you know, heated with heat pumps and stuff. So, and also they're paid for their heat. So you think that they're gonna meet those standards. So they're not, uh, they're, they're, their costs aren't over run. It seems like when it gets down to specific, it's, there's a lot of variance, but it seems like it's fairly, fairly consistent, at least what's gone through these, the, over these nets. So.
Yeah, you know, I, I look at my role in projects as, it's like, I'm there to arm people with information, allow them to make educated business decisions. And I think the planning commission can play a role in that as well in terms of those things like the energy credits and the renewable load management credits. There are design professionals who don't know that those exist in the code. So there are chances that the owner, developer coming in front of you, very likely does not know about those elements of the code. So if you can talk, have the conversation from that vein of trying to just help them meet code and say, hey, make sure you, you've got someone who's on, on your team that's looking at these two elements because that's a code requirement that most people don't consider. And so that way you're being seen as a partner and trying to help them just meet code. I tell you, you're not telling them to do more than code, just, we want to help you meet code. Because that's challenging enough that I find in the state is just getting people to meet code.
Are school buildings exempt from the code?
No.
So the town, our school district, Towne Harford's putting twenty two million dollars into fixing their buildings. They have to comply with this code.
Correct. Depending on what they're doing.
They're, well, they're, they're doing everything from P fast removal to, you know, new installation of walls.
Yeah. So it would all depend. If they said, yeah, we're ripping down all of our lighting and we're going to come up with a new lighting plan because of the new efficient LEDs, you'd have to bring that system up to code.
It wouldn't be an exemption that they're creating or correcting hazard or?
Say that again?
Say the school is doing the work to take care of some sort of hazard in the building. Is there any exemptions for the code in that?
Probably not. I mean, I'd have to, I'd wanna see what a specific example would be, but my hunch would be if you are, the idea behind code is if you're materially touching a system, then you bring it up to code. Um, you know, if, if they're doing all this work in the school, but uh, you know, it's, most school buildings are cinder block brick basery type buildings. If nobody's touching the walls, there's no requirement to make the walls the two thousand and twenty four standard in terms of insulation. It's just the systems that you touch, the electrical, or if you were doing a new boiler or new ventilation system, those types of things.
If it's ventilation, what would, what would be the requirements for that? Because we, we see a lot of that.
Yeah. So if, if the ventilation requirements would be, um, an engineer would have to calculate, you know, what are the ashtray required if you feed per minute for ventilation in a space.
Oh, so if you, if you, if your project involves rehabbing a portion of your facility, does that expose the entire facility to have to be brought up to plan?
Nope, dope, just what you touch. So you could picture that that wall you left alone, this wall you, you demoed down, you know, you ripped off the sheet rock and whatnot. Two things. So code would tell you, say you opened up this wall and it was studs and there was no insulation in there. If we go to the commercial energy code, it would say, wow, you need to have a couple inches of rigid insulation on the outside. But code doesn't force you to put that rigid insulation. All code would tell you is, just make sure you put something in the cavities. They're not gonna force you to do more work. They wouldn't force you to go and remove the exterior of your building to add continuous insulation.
So a question for John or anybody. Is, is any of this within the purview of the planning commission to require?
We should probably request some advice from the league of cities and towns on, on the impact planning commissions.
I think there's a lot of times when we urge a petitioner to take a certain, to go in a certain direction or, or respond appropriately to things that we're suggesting that are really outside our purview by a little bit, or a lot. But I'm not sure that we have.
I think as far as actual enforcement, I think that's as much as we can build.
Yeah, I believe we can request people to, we can request people that, that the building meets commercial code.
Right, right. And I think I, I'd be happy to sit up at the table and recommend that the petitioner pay attention to what the new code is and to comply. But other than pointing them to, uh, engineers and architects that may be conversant in this, I'm not sure that we have the, the.
But if the, if the architect, um, signs his name that this building meets all energy codes, I mean, that's, that's sort of compliance for them. I mean, most architects wouldn't go out on that limb because they'd be opened up or being sued, I think. In fact, we require that they meet the codes and that it is recorded.
Right, that was my question. I'm not sure we can require them to code, can we?
Well, we have a section, some, some of the regulations we have, it says in the findings of fact, the law, energy compliance. And, and we've, in my time, we've invoked that.
So what, what, what's your comment?
So I, I, some of my notes were what can the commission require? You guys have been uh, requiring E V charging or E V ready or whatever. And we've talked about being consistent with that and looking at the code, but I want to make sure you actually have the authority to require it. So this is some of the things Dana and I will have to look into.
Yeah.
I mean, I send staff comments every time we get an application. I can certainly say, you know, please make sure you're aware of the new energy code. Um, we don't get construction level drawings at this level either. So some things they haven't really vetted yet.
Yeah, I mean, even with all the work that we do, to make people aware of the code, there's still an amazing amount of people that go, oh, we have code. So, um, but I think the planning commission of these, you know, made people aware during the hearings that there's codes, you can fill out these forms. At least they've been told a couple of times. And then it's like, it's on them. And if they get sued, then, stop.
But that, that is the myth. And I mean, if you go to FOGS Hardware, you talk to any contractor, all of them will tell you there's no building code in Vermont. Everyone.
But a bunch of succeed code on, on a lot of stuff.
Some, because, because they feel it's the right thing to do, or their customer wants it. But they're not doing it because somebody's telling them they have to do it.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, in the last two years, um, the only person that's handed in an R B's form without having to sit down and be, and fill it out correctly has been Brandon. So, um, it's, yeah.
A lot of work to be done.
We'll see in the next three years how much of this survives.
Well, we're isolated. I mean, we, this is all Vermont. None of this is federal, none of this is national. It would take, it would take a major upheaval in our state legislature to, to change the direction of all of this.
Yeah, and it's the international code, right?
It's the international code, right.
When Quebec shuts off the switch, the legislature is going to be scrambling to figure out what, what they're going to do next. And abandoning some of the code may be their response to adequate access to power.
That actually go the opposite direction because then it would be increasing the demand for electricity.
Yeah. We'll see.
Anybody have anything else?
Do they teach this at the V C, V T C construction program?
Code? Probably not. I don't know for certain, but my knee jerk reaction would be no.
But they're very proud of the construction management program. They're very proud of it. We should ask someday because they're so proud of that program.
If, if I had, if I broke down everything that I should ask somebody, then it would be, yeah, I wouldn't sleep. But I hear you. It's a great question. And maybe that's where it needs to start is more at that level in tech schools and stuff like that.
I'm curious about the, the electric cars in parking garages that are under buildings. Um, do they just think that people aren't going to have electric cars and park them under there if there are no chargers? Because, because like you think that some, some electric cars would end up under the buildings anyway.
Correct. But they would be charging and maybe that's the, the greater threat to fires when they're actually, maybe, I don't know. This is, I'm trying to just guess. Because I, I, I understand a hundred percent what you're saying. Yes, people park electric cars underneath, park under multifamily buildings.
Well, and, and talking about the, the structural steel part, you don't have to melt steel for it to give, give way. You just have to warm it up.
Enough, right.
Yeah, I mean, that's why, that's why mass timber buildings are safer when they're on fire. Because they have to burn and burn and burn. Whereas with a steel building, you just warm up the steel and it just collapses.
But, but I, in one place I stayed, we had underground parking of the facility, there were charges along one entire. There were charges along one entire wall.
Yeah. But where was that?
I can't remember.
Was, was parking underneath the Prospect Street building, are there any chargers?
I think those were, were all outside.
The charger for outside?
Yeah.
Okay.
They're pretty clear.
Yeah, and it's probably different anywhere you go, but the state of Vermont Fire Life Safety folks said, we do not wanna see chargers in parking garages.
We don't, we just approve them. Going through a golf course with hundred nineteen chargers.
Cars are all outside.
No, no.
No, they're all inside.
For golf carts, okay, so now, we're not talking level three chargers, well, okay.
But there's hundred twenty of them.
He said, we decided we can't, we wanted to use the second floor as summer housing. We decided that'd be a bad idea.
Yeah, yeah, keep people away and, right.
Well, thanks.
Yeah.
For coming out.
Thanks for your time.
Yeah, thank you all for attending.
Yeah.
Thank you.